With a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, second on the agenda would be changes to the order of the agenda. Mr. Weiss, any changes? Counsel? Okay. Reports from closed sessions we just had from six to seven. Mr. Rubens?
There is, excuse me, there is one report from closed session. The city council on item three of the closed session authorized the city manager to file a novel claim with the California Commission on state mandates.
Okay, great. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, council communications and announcements. Since there's more of you on the right, by the way, Mr. Griselli has excused absence this evening. But with that, Mr. Klein, any announcements?
Um, I just spoke to our city manager. He's going to give us a quick report later on about what happened, about our response to San Bruno, so I won't get into that for the fireboard. Other than that, I would just like to announce that the Parks and Rec Foundation had a great fundraiser on Friday that the mayor and I took part in. It was a golf, or played for parks, it was a golf tournament out of Poplar Creek. The mayor's team was behind me and his team shot six strokes under, and my team shot eight strokes under. So, just so you know, the better golfer on the dais is myself. And thankfully, Councilman Griselli's not here. Great, that's all I got.
Vice Mayor, Ahmad?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there was a number of things that did happen this weekend regarding San Bruno, so I would only add that the Red Cross is calling for donations and especially blood donations. So I would call for my colleagues on the dais, if you want to join me tomorrow to give some blood, that would be great, and I would encourage everybody else to do so. I am looking forward to a further report. The other thing I would mention, Mr. Mayor, is I do sit on the board for Samtrans. Samtrans did make available a couple of buses that night. We did have some terrific folks from the bus drivers group who actually took some buses over to San Bruno the night that the event occurred to serve as temporary shuttle, and we're trying to build also some additional transportation options for some of those folks who lost their vehicles. Hopefully, we'll have some more details soon.
Great, thank you. Mr. Gerkot?
On a different item, I wanted to let the community know that the family of Gwen and Taz Hofer made a donation to our library of $200,000. They were great volunteers over the years. They were longtime San Carlos residents, and they were involved in the initial funding when the library was built back in 1999. And the husband, Taz, he passed away at age 91 in 2005, and Gwen passed away at age 85 earlier this year. But the library and the city of San Carlos greatly appreciates their contribution, not only this financial contribution, but their contribution as volunteers over the years that they were residents of this city. So, thank you to that family.
Great. Thank you. And yeah, I'll just add on a little bit on, of course, the gas main break and fire inferno there in San Bruno. Just by coincidence, actually, just recently, a new public relations person came on board for PG&E, our rep for our city. And actually, she took initiative to contact the mayor, wanted to get together with me over a cup of coffee and talk. I responded to her request very quickly on Friday morning and said, "Yeah, we do need to get to talk and would love to." And of course, my interest for city of San Carlos is, of course, is, there's, of course, many more questions than answers, not to ask a lot of questions, but just the basic concept that we do need our citizens of San Carlos and city council, you know, a report eventually from her on what our situation is. Is there any risk? Where are we? What are we doing about it? I think we do need to be patient with that. I think we need to let their time, of their company, work with the site itself and with all the federal agencies and all the news media and everything that's going on. But eventually, I will be coming back and owe it to the people of our city just to make sure we reset and understand where we are, because anything like that could happen in any city, of course. So, I will report on that further. And with that, anything else? Great, thank you. We do have a proclamation to our Chamber of Commerce, those wonderful people that do great things for our city and our businesses and have great mixes and all sorts of functions. And so with that, we have our president of the chamber, Judy Johnson, if you could join me, and I'll paraphrase a few items for a special week here that we have for our city.
So I have a proclamation to you and, of course, your wonderful group. Of course, one thing that I will say that might not be--
Yeah, it's not in this proclamation, is the number of members we have, well, that might be in here, but what's not in the proclamation is how many small and special businesses we have that have a tremendous amount of spirit, like all of our citizens. The other half of the city are businesses, and it's important for them to do as well. So with that-- Yeah, listen, let me read you a few words, sir, and I'm sure you'll be bringing this back to your office. You still have a little wall space in the chamber? Okay, I know you guys give a lot and have lots there on the wall. So this is San Carlos Chamber of Commerce, the San Mateo County Chamber of Commerce Alliance, and joins in the local Chamber Week of September 20th through 24th, 2010. Whereas the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce of San Mateo County is scheduled to hold a countywide membership drive. Whereas all 13 chambers of commerce that form that alliance have been interested in raising awareness across the country as to the vital role respective chambers play for business, community, and government. Whereas each chamber will focus on membership development and efforts within the city boundaries, whereas local chambers with their professional executives will, let's see, in staff and volunteer efforts work year-round for the communities to create strong economy, promote the community, promote networking opportunities, and represent the interest of business to government. And whereas during these difficult economic times, as we all know, businesses should be reminded of many things that the chamber does for every day. The businesses are encouraged to join our local chambers and attend the San Mateo County Business Expo on September 22nd this year at the San Mateo County Events Center. So now, I would proclaim by Randy Rosa, mayor, and all of the city council, of course, that September 20th through 24th of this year is hereby declared during the local Chamber Week for the City of San Carlos Chamber, the San Mateo County Chamber Commerce Alliance, this dated 13th day of September 2010. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
So next, we're moving on to item six. This is public comment. This, of course, is for items that are not on this evening's agenda. If anybody would be welcome to speak, come on up. I do have a speaker, one speaker card, Pat Bell. And anybody else would like to speak, come and get a little closer up to the front here. Thank you. Ms. Bell?
Good evening. Pat Bell, San Carlos. I recently learned that the library is going to be remodeled, I think during this fiscal year, and A, I want to know how much that's going to cost San Carlos, and B, why are we doing it now? Couldn't that wait two or three years until the economy bounces back? Given the draconian cuts we've made to everything else, well, now carpet is ugly, but it's not a life and death thing. I just think it's inappropriate to be spending a lot of money beautifying the library. Mr. Klein must have information about this. He's smirking, but anyway, I'd like information too.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak, public comment? Jeff Grace? Hey, welcome. Hey, nice white shirt.
Thank you. I'm not sure this is the right time to speak, I just have a comment on the consent calendar item, so you're going to--
Wait till we get to those items, which is only seconds away. Mr. Weiss?
Yes. If I may, just in the chair, we usually don't respond to public comment, I understand, but as the representative on the library JPA, what I will do is work with staff and with library staff, and we'll report back on that item that Pat brought to our attention.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to item seven, the consent calendar. Mr. Grace, what is that line item? We'll make sure we pull that. It would be seven A through Z.
About J.
J? Okay. And let me turn it back over to city council. Any other items here?
Mr. Mayor--
Motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve consent counters, items seven A through seven I.
Thank you. Hey, Gerkot?
Councilmember Ahmad?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli is absent. Councilmember Gerkot?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Weiss?
Yes. So seven J, we'll talk about that right now. This is an item to authorize city manager to sign a settlement agreement with Save San Carlos Parks related to the Lower Highlands Field renovation synthetic turf project. With that, Jeff, you want to come up and speak first, and then we could talk more about this? Then thank you. Thanks, thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you. Jeff Grace, San Carlos, California. Regarding this item, seven J, and the settlement with Save the Parks, San Carlos Parks Group, this was part of closed session as well. I guess before I made comments, was a decision made in closed session regarding this item.
Mr. Rubens, you want to--
Proceed or not to proceed?
The closed session item was to discuss the settlement agreement itself. The decision on the settlement agreement is in open session. It was originally put on the consent calendar because the council is very well aware of the history of this item and the issues that are in the lawsuit. But this is an opportunity to talk about the settlement agreement, and the decision is being made in open session.
I'm sure the chair, Mr. Mayor, wouldn't it be easier for Mr. Grace if we get the report first that outlines the settlement agreement, and then we can have the comments? I mean, if you think that would be easier.
Let's follow you. I read the documents--
Oh, okay.
--in the website.
Sure.
So why don't we--
No, this would be good. I think for people on the web and on TV, Mr. Weiss or Mr. Rubens, give a short summary. You'd be welcome to now, please.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, you've been up here three times tonight.
As the public might be aware, there was a lawsuit, but last year against the city of San Carlos arising out of the city council's approval of the mitigated magnitude declaration and approval of the turf conversion project at Highlands Park. The litigation progressed, and in, on August 17th, Judge Marie Weiner issued a tentative statement of decision finding in favor of the city regarding the actual use of artificial turf, but the judge raised some issues regarding traffic that are set forth in her tentative statement of decision. Immediately after the decision, the city was approached by the Save San Carlos Parks Group, and we began to discuss resolving the disputes without any kind of admission of fault, but with the eye towards resolving disputes and ending the litigation. The last two weeks, we've been negotiating with the Highlands Park, Save San Carlos Parks Group, and have reached a settlement that they have signed. The settlement agreement actually was just delivered, signed by the representative of the group this morning, and that's why the whole settlement agreement wasn't in the packet. But it has several elements designed to address some of the issues that we believe were raised by the judge in the tentative statement of decision, but clarifying other issues that revolve around the use of the park and the project field as it stated in the settlement agreement. Basically, the issues, most of the issues focus on traffic and parking and safety. And I'll just read in very summary form what the terms of the settlement are. This is, the first item is something that the city council already decided to do earlier this year, was to change and specify the infill material for the artificial turf field from, and eliminating the potential for use of crumb rubber. So the settlement agreement just confirms that and requires organic infill material. The settlement agreement also provides that the city's capital improvement plan for the parks include a line item for replacement and/or repair of the project field, and that's the artificial turf field at Highlands Park. It doesn't require that that be funded, but it does require that there be a line item, sort of as a reminder that that replacement is going to be needed at some point. The other, the parking and traffic improvements include some restricted parking on the east side of Aberdeen, near the, what's described in the settlement agreement as parking lot B, and that's the parking lot nearest Rotary Field and the playground. There is a, some, it's weekend restricted parking only between 8:00 and 6:00, 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM on game days to mitigate against people parking in front of those homes and to discourage parents from dropping off their children in front of those homes and having them cross a busy street to enter the park. There's going to be some signs notifying drivers that they should be courteous to the neighborhood and park in the parking lots and not on the street. There'll be two speed humps installed on Aberdeen Drive, one just after the first driveway where the tennis courts are, described as lot A, and one just after the entrance to lot, excuse me, one before the entrance to lot A where the tennis courts are, and one just after the entrance to lot B. And that's to, the effort there is to slow down traffic, again, primarily for safety reasons, and also to allow people, when they get to that first speed hump, to see the first parking lot. One of the themes of the settlement agreement is to eliminate some of the impacts on the parking lot that's most popular and move it to where there's ample parking near the tennis courts. There'll be a stop sign installed on Glasgow Lane. Right now, that's an uncontrolled intersection, so for safety reasons, a stop sign there seems preferable, especially since there's some line of sight issues that the neighborhood identified. There'll be some parking spaces in the parking lots devoted to passenger loading and unloading. We're going to accomplish that by having a five-minute parking limitation on those spaces. There'll be some designated carpool spaces, and carpools will be defined as two or more players in a car. We're going to red stripe the entrance to lot B. The lot B driveway right now is being used by parking, for parking, which further restricts access and creates some unsafe conditions, so it's going to be red striped on both sides. We're going to have some additional signage to assist field users in the most efficient use. We've got a modified practice schedule to address one of the issues raised in the tentative decision about peak rush hour periods during the fall soccer practice, so we've got a staggered field concept schedule that will reduce trips during the peak periods. We've got some limitation on the starting of games on Saturdays, excuse me, starting of the arrival of, let me restate that, I want to read it exactly the way it says. "The field use agreements will be amended to specify that no games shall begin before 8:00 AM, and coaches will be required to notify their players to arrive no earlier than 15 minutes before an 8:00 AM game or 45 minutes before their scheduled game." So the 15-minute rule just applies to the first game of the weekend. It does not include setup, so if the field needs to be set up, this is just addressed to the players. There'll be a, some limitation on the hours of use. The total hours will be 3,000 hours per year for organized sports, and there'll be an online calendar that helps ensure the efficient use of the field, so people know where they're supposed to go, things of that nature. There's an attorney fee payment. SEQA has what they call a private attorney general aspect to it. There's, although the city's not admitting any fault, as part of the settlement, there's a payment of attorney's fees and costs to the plaintiff's attorney of $84,612.23. The court reserves jurisdiction, and there's a process contained in the settlement agreement that allows the city to amend the use of the project field by employing a SEQA process. The agreement also has a full release of all claims and includes a provision that this will be submitted to the judge for approval, and the court will have continuing jurisdiction over the interpretation of its terms.
Hey, anything else, sir? Mr. Rubens?
That's basically a summary of the settlement agreement. We're recommending that the city council approve the settlement agreement.
Okay, great. Mr. Grace, please come and give us any thoughts and advice.
All right. We're trying to get this done this time. I certainly want to see the Highlands Park project move forward. I've been living this thing for, it seems like, for 15 years, so nobody wants to see this move forward more than I do. And I understand we need to sign the settlement agreement, because if we don't sign the settlement agreement, we're not going to move on with the project, we're not going to be able to use the park. So unfortunately, it is what it is, I guess. Some of the items that are in the settlement agreement are items that have been discussed going back as far as when I was commissioner of soccer in 1995. So the traffic issues, we've always been trying to address those. Some of the others that were just highlighted are somewhat disturbing, but I mean, I assume a lot of work's been gone into the settlement agreement, and to rehash this again is probably not going to do anybody any good. But what is particularly disturbing to me is the payment that we are going to have to make of $85,000 plus $10,000 to the court for what I consider to have been a trivial lawsuit from this, what they call themselves, the Save the San Carlos Parks Group. I mean, they are hardly anything but Save the San Carlos Parks. They have just siphoned off a significant amount of money from our park funds to go to lawyers, and no offense, Greg, but I think we had better uses of those funds than to pay off a lawsuit. I feel as though we've been held hostage. I feel like this is the Baykeeper thing all over again. To get these people to go away, we have to pay them off to go away, and it just does not sit right with me whatsoever. I could go on and on about the Save the San Carlos Park group. I know the people, you know, I don't feel they acted in good faith, I don't feel they acted in a cooperative manner, they acted what was in their best interests and not the citizens of San Carlos' best interests. And what's really disturbing that I read in the settlement agreement, that there appear to be funds in Measure G, if I read this correctly, to pay for this lawsuit and to pay for legal fees, and going back to what the original intent of Measure G was, and I find it very difficult to believe, that Measure G funds were legal or can be legally used or intended to be used to pay off lawsuits. I think we need to find another place to find those funds to pay these people off and pay legal fees, but I think Measure G was very specific as to what the use of it was, and I don't believe it was to pay off lawsuits unless there's something in the measure that allows for this to occur. And following, you know, this was one group, and I don't know how organized this group was, obviously, they're pretty well organized, much smarter guys up there. How are we assured that there can't be a different group of people that come forward sometime in the future and try to hold us hostage again for a situation just like this up at Highlands? Thank you.
Mr. Grace, thank you very much. Maybe, Mr. Rubens, you want to just give a little more clarification, or Mr. Malby, on the capitalization costs in legal in Measure G, just to make sure there's no question on that?
Well, the settlement agreement doesn't specify the funding source for the payment in the settlement. I think what the staff report talked about was that Measure G funds are going to have to be used for the field. They're not specified for the attorney's fees in any way.
Good, okay. Well, Mr. Grace, thank you for your thoughts. As you commented, everybody in San Carlos is paying for it. The good news, that it's done, or very close to being done, we will have turf. You could remind the children it's costing them an extra 50 bucks the first time they play in that field, but other than that, it's all really, really good news for the city of San Carlos. So appreciate your comments, thank you. We have a speaker, Pat Bell, you're going to talk about turf? Welcome.
I just have a different take on this lawsuit question. I think San Carlos is too ready to dig in its heels and get sued. I think if you put that same amount of effort into settling it before it gets to this point, you'd save a lot of legal fees, and we can't afford to be paying other people's lawyers. You know, he mentioned Save the Bay, or Baykeepers, whatever they are. I'm so glad they did that, because San Carlos wouldn't have done what's right if Baykeepers hadn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on this topic? Great, thank you. With that, any discussion from council before we take a vote on this? Mr. Gerkot?
I just--
Mr. Gerkot, the person, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I go with the way I left.
Yeah.
Please.
So I just wanted to comment, since so much has been said on this item, I wasn't expecting to say anything, being that it was a consent calendar item, but I respect that it's been pulled and Mr. Grace's words on it. And I agree in terms of, to the settlement agreement, what's in here was, of course, part of the closed session negotiations and discussions. I also agree that it's unfortunate that we're having to dish out the money that we are. It could have been more, it actually could have been a much higher figure. Just to clarify, there was money in this project, budgeted into this project to take care of legal fees and other things, and Mr. Rubens is correct that the, just the project costs overall have gone up, and one could say that Measure G funds are being used for, you know, turf just as well, because it's all part of the project and part of the costs of the project. But I do understand the concern that you speak of. I'll be voting in favor of this, but I would just say that, you know, when this project was approved, and we went this direction at the time, there was another council member here, Mr. Davids, and he and I both voted against this project for this very reason, because we knew there was going to be a lawsuit. We didn't want to spend the city's money in that direction, and that's why he and I were trying to go in a different direction for a project and a different site. That's also why when I was the mayor, you know, we had a meeting, if you'll remember, back at the youth center, and we went through a whole process, and it was determined at that time that we would try to do something with the schools, and sites were picked to do, to go that direction. Unfortunately, working with the school district, or, you know, talking with the school district didn't work out that way, and those projects didn't happen, and here we are today.
Thank you. Mr. Klein?
Okay, just a couple of things. I agree with Councilman Gerkot where it said, we knew going forward that we were going to get sued over this, but that is unfortunately becoming a place to do in business and government if you're going to do something and someone doesn't agree with it, they're going to sue you. And that's just something we have to factor into these costs. What wasn't mentioned was the fact that we spent a lot of staff time, and there was a lot of our attorney's time, that's also part of that figure. It's not just the $95,000 or so, there's a great deal amount of more on that. And to respond to one of the things said in public comment, they did sue us. They sued as a council, they sued us as a community. So when you say they sued you, that's not technically true, this is all of our money, so let's be real about that. The city council, yeah, the city, no, I wasn't responding to you, Mr. Grace, responding to another public comment. No, I'm certainly going to check for this. This comes out of the big pocket of the city of San Carlos, so there's no you, there's no us, this is a community. So when someone sues what the city has done, they're suing all of us, so we just need to be real about that. And it's easy to point fingers and say, "This was your decision, it's coming out of your pocketbook," but it's coming out of the collective. pocketbook, but it's coming out of the collective pocketbook. So, that's it. I'll be voting in favor of this, because it's the price of doing business.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make just the briefest of comments. This lawsuit was filed roughly a few minutes after we did the vote. I have not made any comments about this, because it is still pending litigation, and it's inappropriate, from my perspective, for a city council member to speak on this topic, because our first duty is to protect the interests of the city. Hopefully, when this thing is done, I'll get to vent my spleen. Until then, trust me, I'm swallowing pretty hard and keeping things in check, but with that, I'll move approval of Item 7J.
Okay. With that, can I hear a motion then? Would anybody else like to speak on this, my right? Sorry?
Mr. Malby already moved.
I made the motion, so I'll second it.
Thank you. Grokot?
Councilman Malin?
Yes.
Councilman Grokot?
Yes.
Councilman Klein?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming to speak on this. Reports, moving on to Agenda Item Eight, our reports to council. Mr. Weiss?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we've had a number of inquiries over the last few days regarding the city's response to the situation in San Bruno, and we thought it would just be appropriate to indicate that there has been a number of mutual aid responses, starting with the event that evening. Certainly, the police department assigned personnel immediately to assist in that event, the fire department did as well. I think the police had six sworn personnel that first day for the next. The chief and the commander were on call over the weekend. The fire chief was also involved, fire marshal, a couple of engines, the hazmat team was involved in providing response. Even our public information officer, Mr. Mora, was on call as in a mutual aid capacity for mutual aid, and I should also mention our city attorney is working up in San Bruno now as an interim city attorney, I think, is the title, and so he's been involved. So, a number of different city personnel have been involved, and undoubtedly, as time passes here, we'll do a tabletop exercise within the city of San Carlos to glean from the people that were involved, what didn't go right, and what we can improve upon, so that we're better prepared in San Carlos should an event similar to this occur here. In addition to that, I should mention that the Public Works Director has been in touch with PG&E, just as you have, Mr. Mayor, with respect to the location of lines and the maintenance schedule for lines. They are inundated with calls right now from other communities that are looking for very similar information, and once we have that information, or what information can be shared, we will share that with the community as well. We thought that it would be appropriate, though, tonight, just to make note of those events, Commander Robbins, Gary Fauch was here earlier, he may have had to leave, but Mark is here. Brian is here, so the people that were involved on behalf of the city directly, the city attorney obviously are here tonight, if you have any direct questions or specific questions for them as well. Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Klein?
Mr. Mayor, just one, and Mr. Weiss touched on it, and it's great that the Public Works Director's going to be working on that. We do have two gas transmission lines that run through San Carlos. One runs up, one runs up Britton, and one runs down industrial. So, I know, and they're slated to, I know now, through a court order, I believe, all the transmission lines are slated to be checked, so the only way that is, if we can get a report on when that's going to be done, and I understand it's not going to happen for months, even getting a report, because they have other things to deal with right now, but getting a report on when it's going to be done, and then a report after the fact of how those lines are functioning, if there's any need of repairs, we'd be great just to keep on our heads, so we know moving forward what that looks like.
Just to that point, we've looked at our records, we understand that there was a maintenance done in two thousand and four, I believe, for the Britton and Endor County road lines, so we are checking those records as well at City Hall, and we'd be happy to provide a report as more information is available.
Anything else? Mr. Malin?
I just have one final thing, first of all, to, you know, our police officers, our sworn officers of police and fire, you know, it's phenomenal that we have this mutual aid ability where we can go and help people. People need to understand what mutual aid means, though. When we do send people, especially from our fire department, it does mean that our service levels drop in town, and this is something that is just, again, the price of doing business. We have to help out our neighbors, because our neighbors help us. So, when we send people to San Bruno, it does mean we close a couple stations, but it's usually for a short amount of time, and we're able to handle that through other mutual aid aspects, and our neighbors do it just as much for us as we do it for them, so it's a great thing that our county has been able to come together and have all those aspects and to share resources, especially in a time of need, because there's no city in the county that could handle an emergency like this on their own. So, it's great that we can lean on each other, and, you know, we'll see that move forward for hopefully decades, but it's been a great thing this county was able to do, because there are areas in this country that don't do that. That's it.
Mr. Malin?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to just report that we do have, within San Mateo County, a council of cities that has, that group is made up of the elected officials from all the cities within San Mateo County. That group has been active in trying to lend support to San Bruno. We've had people out there and have been in contact with the good folks in San Bruno, and the response from San Mateo County has been quick, rapid, and it has been working. For the folks on the San Carlos Police Department, I know that, speaking to the San Bruno elected officials, they were very grateful for the support that they received from San Carlos Police Department. There were a couple of incidents that did involve San Carlos Police Department officers in, I'll just say it was an incident, and I'll let, if the police care to elaborate, that's great, but their help was absolutely needed, and they were there in force and really did help out. The police department, I'm sorry, the fire department was exemplary, they helped set up the command structure at the Tanforan Mall, and we've had some guys out there for a number of days providing support. But other than that, I would also want to point out that our city staff, Brian Mora, and our city has been lending help to the citizens of San Bruno. There is a lot of infrastructure, there's a lot of legal questions about what's supposed to happen, and we've been pitching in, and this has been a tremendous point of cooperation. There are two things I would like to bring out, Mr. Mayor. One, I think everybody is going to be looking at the PG&E lines with a great deal of scrutiny. At this point, a PG&E on audit, from my perspective, is probably not going to hold as much weight as I would like it to, so I would like to see either from this level, a county level, or possibly even a state level, if there's an independent audit that can be done and verified, and if we need to go up to Sacramento to force that issue. I'll be in the car very shortly. The second part is somewhat interesting, that a few days before this occurred, I was in Director Wile's office, speaking about disaster planning and disaster planning communications, and this came up very quickly, so at some point, I would like to agendize, possibly more of an informal discussion for city council, more of where our disaster planning is and sort of what state we are in. We do have a very active CERT program, we are doing those things, but I think it's on top of people's minds, and this is a good time to go ahead and review it, make certain that everybody is familiar, and we can move forward with those plans.
Okay. Mr. Grokot?
Just one item on this topic, and that is, folks may be wondering, you know, how they can get involved and how they can help, and I know, as a Lions Club member, that the Lions Club in San Bruno is very active, and one of their council members is a Lions member, and so there's been response there. I suppose, you know, we have some other members, I suppose all the service clubs are being involved in that, and so I would just say to the community, I know you can always go through the Red Cross, but if you want to do something that feels a little bit more local, and where you feel maybe a little bit more secure about your funds actually going directly to helping victims of this fire, is simply to contact any one of our service clubs, whether it's Lions, whether it's your Cubanes, and you can give them a check and just put "fire" in the memo, and they'll see to it that that money gets used to help out families who've been displaced from their homes.
And I'll just conclude, echo all the comments that have been made. This situation is a little different. I guess I've lost some confidence in our world recovery of major catastrophes and earthquakes. We know where they've been around, we've had a lot in the last year, year and a half, and it's impossible to get care, and even water, and supplies, and so forth. This is almost as major, but it's a very, very small area, but I was very impressed in all these professional teams, and how organized it is, and all the giving that has come with San Mateo County, the involvement of cities, of county, of state government, federal government, from aid to spaghetti feeds to looms. I mean, there is stuff happening this weekend, most of it's orchestrated already on what's going to be done. They're going to be working with the cause over the next year, but the care and the love and giving back to the people, it's tremendous how this county, local county, have all worked together to make this happen, and as Mr. Grokot said, there's many ways for our people to get involved. My last comment is, the news media has been exceptional. They actually are a good source, the TV and the newspapers, you go to their websites and read their articles, there'll be all sorts of information out there on how to get involved, because there, of course, there's a lot more work to do. So, with that, entertain a motion?
Do you want to just work for it? Oh, for, on J? I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry. Oh, that's e-information, okay. Oh, you already spoke on that?
She wants public comment.
Would you like to speak on that? Pat Dell coming up and speaking again on Item Eight, reports to council.
I just ask everyone to remember the four people who are still in the burn unit in San Francisco, in the city. There's no place worse in a hospital than the burn unit, and those families are undoubtedly living in the waiting room of the burn unit. I've lived in hospital waiting rooms, and it's a horrible thing. I've never lived in the burn unit waiting room, and I'm eternally grateful, but those people have years ahead of them of incredible pain, emotional and physical. They'll have to be sedated every time they have a treatment, and I'm getting goosebumps talking about it, but the news covers the splashy stuff. This isn't splashy, but it's going to go on forever, so please keep them in your thoughts as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Nine, A. We have one item. This is a public hearing, consideration of resolution to approve the engineering report, confirm the assessment diagram, and order a levy of assessments for fiscal year two thousand and ten and eleven for the Pulgas Creek Levy Improvement Assessment District. And Mr. Wile, before you get going, let me, this is a formal public hearing, I believe, Christine, I need to read a few of these things here, just to make sure that everybody understands what we're doing. This public hearing, in the conclusion of the ballot proceeding, will allow property owners in the area of Skyway Road and Shoreway Road in the city of San Carlos to decide if an assessment should be approved to provide funding for the proposed Pulgas Creek Levy Improvement Assessment District. This public hearing that we're having right now, starting, gives property owners and residents another opportunity to obtain the information about the proposed assessment. It also provides the opportunity for property owners, residents, to proceed with any additional input or comments to the city of San Carlos. After the end of the public input portion of this hearing, the balloting period will be closed. So, in summary, what we're doing is we'll get a report from Mr. Wile, staff report on the proposed improvements, open up a public hearing, we'll get public comments, we'll be asking you for those items, anybody can speak, or any questions you have on this item. After that, then staff will report back and answer any questions, or legal counsel, any of those items that may come up, and after that, then we will have a final call for ballots. After the call of ballots, public input portion of the hearing will be closed, there will be a recess to allow for tabulation of the ballots, and then we will announce those. Ms. Volhun, anything I missed there?
Yeah, exactly right.
I'm a good leader, huh?
Good.
Thank you. So, with that, Mr. Wile, please, your staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I'll be brief, we've gone over this project several times before. Just a brief overview, what you have there is an aerial view of Redwood Shores, and Highway 101 is running up and down on the left side of the page there, and the San Francisco Bay is to the right. And in color around Redwood Shores is a system of levies that protect, basically, that land from the bay, and if that weren't there, the levy weren't there, and storm events, the bay can basically fill that area, or if there's a break in the levy, that area fills up like a bathtub. So, that's what this is designed to prevent, is flooding of that area. And the federal government, in updating its flood insurance rate maps, recently looked at this area and said, to keep this from flooding, you need to raise the levy by about two feet, more or less. And so, Redwood City, the San Carlos, city of San Carlos, and the San Mateo County have all cooperated, since the ownership of this levy has three different parts. Our part is that little red part, like two percent of the whole system, right there at the end of Skyway Road, and so ours is a very small part of the whole system, and at a cost of about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that levy was raised for about two feet. Most of the cost actually wasn't the construction, but all the permitting and the certification and the engineering, but that's about what it cost to do that. And so, what we're here tonight to do is to, we've balloted property owners to vote on an assessment to recover the cost of raising that, and then importantly, to fund the ongoing operation and maintenance of that small piece of levy there, because unless the operation and maintenance is covered, really, the levy can't be certified as meeting the criteria. If it can't be certified, then it's still a bathtub, and so, people behind the levy would be forced to pay flood insurance. The properties that were balloted are all the properties east of 101, within the city of San Carlos, so Long Skyway Road and Long Shoreway Road, basically, are the locations. There's fourteen different properties, less property owners than that, and the ballots went out after you had a hearing, or you approved the ballots about a month and a half ago, and so we're here to get the ballots tonight and to consider any requests for information, or any public hearing, anything that comes out of the public hearing before acting on this assessment district. What you're being asked to do, basically, is approve the final version of the engineer's report, which says, this work is needed, this is why it's needed, this is what it's going to cost, this is how the costs are spread. If you do approve that engineer's report, then that levy of assessments would then go to each property owner. By approving that, you're asking the county to collect that on behalf of the city. Capital costs of the assessments go on for ten years, and then the operations and maintenance goes, which is a much smaller number, goes on in perpetuity.
Great, thank you. Any questions of staff? Mr. Grokot?
I have one. The, one of the properties there would be Samtrans?
That's correct.
And, Mr. Almiron, I don't want to make you feel uncomfortable or anything, but you sit on the Samtrans board, and I'm not sure, Greg could speak to this, if there's any, I would hope there wasn't any conflict, doesn't seem like there would be, but I just wanted...
Actually, I'll go ahead and speak to that. Mr. Grokot, I actually disqualified myself from that vote, because I wanted to vote on it here, but I can tell you that Samtrans did take an action to approve voting for this.
I was just looking out for you.
No, I appreciate it. Any other questions? Okay, so, before we get to the public comment, I do want to remind you that the ballots did need to be submitted by the end of the public comment. If you don't have a ballot or lost it, you could get another one here from Ms. Malin, so please come on up if you would like another one that you don't have. So, with that, let's move into public comment, because this is the time for anybody that is interested in speaking, commenting, questioning, anything, we welcome you to come up. Honored Mcclair, please.
Just before Ms. Mcclair, just a clarification, the ballots that we're collecting are for the property owners affected, not for San Carlos in general, correct?
Correct.
It's the property owners. Just wanted to verify, because...
Honored Mcclair, San Carlos. I just have a question. I was out at the, I was at the embassy port last week, and talking to a property owner, developer of that private unit in Redwood City, and he mentioned the WIC method that he used there, that he felt that has been very successful in the... very successful in Holland, as opposed to those levees, or maybe in conjunction with. And I just wondered if that had been investigated at all.
Mr. Wild, want to answer that now?
Well, I'm sorry about the noise here. I need to cap someone on my left or right here. I only know this much about the wicking method, but it's usually, I think, used for filling land. So you, I saw this used in Nevada, where basically the, down a wick, it draws moisture out of the bay mud, and then you were able to fill on top of it, and then you would, instead of diking off the area, you fill the area. So this would go back to when Redwood Shores was originally built, and that wasn't found to be economically feasible at that time. The places I've seen it are used are smaller areas, like just a shopping center in the middle of a mud area. Is that the context? I think that's right.
Good, good. I'm asking you to respond right away. I think there may be very few questions here, is why. Anybody else, public comment, any questions on this public hearing?
Mr. Wild, we have a closed public hearing.
Second. Okay. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the public comment section is closed. Do we do balloting now, Ms. Bullen?
I have to take a break.
So how much time do you need?
We only have a few ballots, and it should be less than five minutes.
Less than five? Okay, let's, the clock in all shows five minutes, too. Let's recess until 8:00 PM, we reconvene. Do we need a number two pencil? Okay, let's reconvene here. I believe the tabulation has been completed by city clerk, Ms. Bullen.
Yes, it did pass.
Can you give us the results?
It did pass. We had five votes for yes, one for no, and it's a basically simple dollar majority, so it did pass.
Okay, majority of the number of votes received?
It's...
Can we, I want to make sure we understand the approval here?
Tax measure passed?
Yeah.
Thomas, come on up. Yeah, Thomas, by bill with CSI, not C.
CSI, I can see. I'm sorry. The voting is weighted on the dollar amount of the proposed assessment, so those property owners who have more of a proposed assessment do have a higher stake in the vote. Either way, by a majority of the votes cast and by a majority of the votes weighted by the proposed assessment amount, the balloting does appear to pass.
Great. Thank you. Okay, with that, then, any discussion before we take a vote on this? Okay, can I hear Mr. Malby?
Approved the resolution number...
2010-82.
Resolution of the city council, the city of San Carlos approving engineer's report, confirming diagram and assessment, and ordering levy of assessments within Pulgas Creek Levy Improvement Assessment District for fiscal year 2010, 2011.
Second. Okay, first and second. Wilkott, please.
Councilman DeLonge?
Yes.
Councilman DeLonge?
Yes.
Mayor Voice?
Yes. Okay, great. Thank you. And Christine, Ms. Bullen, thank you for all the organization there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
On that. Okay, moving on to agenda item 10, new business. We have two items. The first is adopting our San Carlos strategic plan, which city council and staff met a few weeks ago. Second item is dealing with a change order for interstate grading and paving. We'll be doing that second. So Mr. Malby, take us through 10A again, the San Carlos strategic plan.
Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. Jeff Malby, administrative services director. On August 27th, the city council met with the city manager, the department directors, city clerk, and several members of the public who were in attendance to conduct the 10th six-month strategic plan update for the city of San Carlos. In terms of, oops, in terms of what was done during the meeting, the group reviewed the city's mission statement. In the past, we've had meetings specific, or topics during the meeting specific to updating or actually creating the city's mission statement. This time, we just reviewed it. The city's mission statement is that the city of San Carlos provides high-quality services and facilities in a fiscally sustainable, responsive, and friendly manner to foster our safe and healthy community. We went on to review the city's vision statement, which is by 2012, the city of San Carlos will be a vibrant and thriving home and destination for individuals, families, and businesses. Throughout, we took a look at the city's core values, and these are not in priority order. They include the city of San Carlos values fiscal responsibility and sustainability, protecting our environment, strategic thinking and planning for the future, high ethical standards, community involvement, high-quality customer service, and a strong sense of community and public safety. The city has a number of three-year goals. These goals were identified starting in the year 2009, so we're a little bit more than about halfway through the three-year goals here. Nevertheless, we reviewed those. The goals remain the same, which are to plan for and implement long-term financial sustainability, provide effective and sustainable public safety, manage effectively the infrastructure and facilities of the city, enhance community awareness, involvement, and engagement, and preserve and enhance our distinct community character. The city developed approximately 30 six-month objectives to help move the city towards achieving its three-year goals that were just described. Plan for and implement long-term financial sustainability, the three-year goal will include reporting to the city council on the outcomes of the county city manager's shared services retreat by November 15th, 2010. By December 1st, 2010, develop a consistent branding image, marketing messages, and marketing materials for business attraction, increased retail sales, and all city materials and outreach correspondence, and present to the city council for action. By December 15th, present to the city council the city's unfunded liabilities and recommend to the city council for consideration strategies to address the city's financial obligations to our past and present employees. At February 15th, 2011, complete salary and benefit reduction proposals for all labor groups and present to the city council for action. By February 15th, 2011, present a contract to the city council for action for a branding implementation consultant. By October 15th, 2010, and this is moving on to the second goal, provide effective and sustainable public safety. By October 15th, 2010, present the consultant's report to the city council on fire and emergency services, and recommend to the city council for action the issuance of an RFP, request for proposal, for providing fire and emergency services to San Carlos after October 2011. By October 15th, 2010, present to the city council a report on community outreach regarding consolidation of police services with the sheriff. By January 15th, 2011, coordinate the presentation of proposals by prospective providers for fire and emergency services. By February 15th, 2011, hold a disaster training exercise for the CERT team. Continuing with the public safety goal, by February 15th, 2011, present to the city council for consideration options on providing fire and emergency services in San Carlos after October 2011. A future objective without a date yet assigned to it, provide an update to the city council on the transition of police services to the sheriff's office. Manage effectively the infrastructure and facilities. The six-month objectives include, by September 15th, present to the city council for action a revised sewer ordinance to meet the terms of the baykeeper consent decree. By October 1st, 2010, present to the city council for action a specification for citywide cleaning and inspection of the sewer collection system to meet the terms of the baykeeper consent decree. By November 1st, 2010, present to the city council for action a consulting contract for an ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. By February 1st, 2011, complete flow monitoring of the sewer collection system to meet the terms of the baykeeper consent decree. Continuation of the manage effectively the infrastructure and facilities goal, by February 15th, 2011, begin populating the LAN logic assessment management database. By February 15th, 2011, develop and present to the city council for action a contract for a trails master plan. By February 15th, 2011, present to the city council for action a contract for permitting software system in the building division, building and planning. Future objective, present to the city council for direction a feasibility report regarding the formation of a stormwater utility, which would include incentives to reduce flow and reduce water runoff to help prevent flooding. Manage effectively the infrastructure and facilities continued with two more future objectives. Present to the city council for action a budget proposal for a transit needs survey. Present to the city council for action a budget proposal for a pedestrian transportation plan. Enhance community awareness, involvement, and engagement. We have an ongoing six-month objective to inform the community of high-speed rail workshops, events, and report to the city council on the results of the community outreach. By November 1st, 2010, inform the city council of the implications, i.e. pros and cons, of high-speed rail on San Carlos and other peninsula communities, with a special emphasis on adjacent cities. By February 15th, 2011, develop and present to the city council an outreach plan to involve service clubs and nonprofits in addressing unmet community needs. The enhanced community awareness goal continued. By February 15th, 2011, investigate the website redesign and enhancements and recommended options to the city council for direction. By February 15th, 2011, update the community regarding major development projects, i.e. Rio Plaza and the Transit Village. Our three-year goal to preserve and enhance our distinct community character. By December 1st, 2010, present to the redevelopment agency for action a facade improvement grant program for local businesses. By February 15th, 2011, hold at least two community workshops, as well as informational meetings with various stakeholder groups regarding the comprehensive zoning ordinance update. By February 15th, 2011, get feedback from the community on the San Carlos high-speed rail segment and share it with the Peninsula Rail Program. By February 15th, 2011, prepare and present to the redevelopment agency and the city council for action a funding proposal for a gateway design as defined and located in the general plan improvement and implementation plan. That is the entirety of the city's six-month strategic plan. Three-year goals and six-month objectives were asked by our strategic plan leader, Marilyn Schneider, to read this into the record, which is why I've read all these goals and objectives for you, verbatim, this evening. So our facilitator will be pleased with that. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, or document any changes you might make to the plan tonight, as well as, I think, some of the other department directors, the city manager who are here as well.
Great, thank you. Before, any questions? Anybody in the public have any comments on this? Welcome to, okay? Any comments from council? Mr. Mudd?
I'm going to move approval. I'm going to move approval of the strategic plan.
Second. Okay, we have a first and second. Wilkott, please.
Councilman DeLonge?
Yes.
Councilman DeLonge?
Yes.
Mayor Voice?
Yes. We have one more item. 10B is consideration of authorizing a change order with interstate grading and paving an amount of $111,000 for replacement of all drain lines for the Highlands Field renovation. Mr. Wild?
Yes, thank you, morning.
Council members, be real quick here. Okay, just a...
Okay, just wanted to show you the condition of the existing drainage system. Can we run through these pictures real quick? The pipe material that's in the field right now was not the way it was originally planned to be. It was intended to be a solid styrene pipe, instead it's a corrugated plastic pipe, has less strength and, than, than originally should have been. And then, significantly, the trench construction was not per the plans, and the filter fabric does not wrap around the pipe, which means that the drain rock that surrounds the pipe is contaminated with sand. I'll show you that in a minute. We found there were various deficiencies in this. We found debris and sediment in the pipe, pipes deformed, we found some punctures and cracks. There's a, you get a sense of the deformation and then the debris and gravel, this was even after cleaning it. That's one thing about the corrugated pipe, is it's difficult, difficult to clean. Here again, you get a better picture of the oval shape of that, of the pipe. And to, you know, when a pipe is flattened like this, it loses some of its hydraulic efficiency, and this is kind of on its way toward collapse, so we're concerned that as the contractor places drain rock and, and works with the, to compact it over these pipes, further damage could be done. The contractor's responsible for the damage, but then there's always the chance that after he's done, and the one-year maintenance period is done, maybe, maybe there's a, there's, there's more, it collapses, and it's, it's a long-term kind of problem. So, we want to really avoid that. The, the new system is going to have, well, this is the main that runs the whole length of the field, that actually carries water from stadium field on down through Lower Highlands. And then coming, teeing off of this are laterals that are perforated and collect water from bridges in the fields. And these, this is a lateral that comes in from the side. And so, this was basically just punched through a hole in the pipe. What we would do with the change order is put a T in, and T this, and it'd be a smooth connection instead of this rough connection. That, that will give it greater hydraulic efficiency, make it easier to clean, and just be a better product. We do find debris in it, this is a large rock found there. And here's a picture of, here, a broken pipe, broken, broken pipe. And a lateral intruding, as I was mentioning, as a hole in the side of the pipe. This is the one portion that's solid. Some areas, it is cracked longitudinally, that, that starts to really worry me, because that, that is the beginning of a collapse. I have some roots, the roots, we're going to put in a root area to keep roots from coming under the synthetic field, so, but one of the difficulties with this corrugated pipe is it's very difficult to clean, we can't rot it out very easily. And here's, there's a sign of the beginning of a collapse. And as I was saying, the, the, this is the original plant for twenty years ago, this is the, the perforated laterals that we were looking at, the T in the pipe. And this filter fabric was not placed at this location, so the sand, and this upper bedding of sand under the field, has migrated down into the drain rock around the pipe. And the drain rock needs to have voids, because that's how it drains. Because the sand mixed in with the drain rock, it doesn't drain. So, basically, that's contaminating, and that's got to go. So we're, we're going to be digging this out anyways, so it really makes sense to do the pipes at the same time. The pipes we're going to go with are material called N-12, it's corrugated on the outside for strength, but it's smooth on the inside. And it's been invented in the past twenty years since this, this field was, was installed. And the fittings will be teed, there'll be T fittings at the main to the laterals. So, the contractor gave us a fair price for it, and it was actually the contractor's recommendation to do this, he felt that it would be, make it a much better product. He had a, the pipe and material and labor was about $160,000, $150,000, but he took $30,000 off for the effort that he would have done to put drain rock in, in, in here. He was supposed to put drain rock to that point. So he gave us a credit for part of the work, it seems like a, a pretty fair deal. And it, it, it does cut into your budget for other capital projects that you could have done with the remaining Measure G balance. But, you know, my theory is do the project right, and then, and then we'll just work down the priority list with, with the money that's left over. So, we would recommend approval of the change order, and be glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Anybody, anybody would like to speak on this item? Mr. Grace?
Jeff Craig, Jeff Grace, San Carlos, didn't really come here to comment on this, but since this presentation was given, during my time on the field committee, I was fortunate enough to learn a lot about fields that I never thought I'd want to know, but has come in handy, I guess. One of the main issues that was stressed during our different sessions with natural turf, artificial turf, whoever came in and talked about it, they heavily stressed the substructure, and primarily the drainage, if this drainage isn't correct, it isn't going to work right. And I've been convinced for fifteen-plus years that that drainage wasn't right in Highlands, and that's why we were in this position anyway in the first place, because I don't think the drainage was ever correct from the original construction. So, I would encourage us, let's go ahead and do this the right way, put in the drainage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grace. Anybody else? Ronnie McClure?
I'm a clear San Carlos, ditto.
Thank you.
Me too.
Okay, with that, can I hear a motion?
Push for a move approval of the change order.
Second. A roll call, please.
Councilman Lamont, Councilman Grokot?
Yes.
Councilman decline?
Yes.
Mayor voice?
Yes. Just before adjourned, just wondering, I think I see two action items, make sure staff has them, one is, Mr. Grokot, based on public comment, commented about the library, and some of the capital improvements and so forth, and then come back and report on that. And the other item, we all echoed, was with the disaster in San Bruno, there are some opportunities there to, to do some reporting back to council, to public disaster planning was part of that, that Mr. Ahmad spoke about. And other than that, did I miss anything else, Mr. Klein?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you were just pointing out to me recently, but this is our city manager's last meeting at the helm of our city, so I just want to wish him very well, and good luck in your future plans, and I hope your golf score comes down.
Okay, congratulations, Mark. With that, adjourn. Thank you.